It's 4:33. Samantha Carroll will be attending remotely as to the laws of remote attendance due to COVID-19, and we have physical quorum in the room. Samantha, you may take over.
So actually COVID-19, it's just in accordance with what we, right before COVID, we passed internal bylaws to okay remote attendance if certain requirements are met and she has met those requirements.
Okay, good.
I don't, I don't have COVID. Just for anyone who, you know, I saw you yesterday. So Sophia called a meeting to order, and so I will take a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
Okay, all in paper?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Any public comments?
No public comments.
So, just to be clear, we're still missing Anay and Alana and Carl. Great.
And has everybody met COVID?
I'm at, well, I think you're only at the
This is the finance meeting.
Yeah, he was sworn in at the finance meeting last month and was unable to attend the full board meeting, so Jacoby Jones.
There's some people. I can't see where they are.
And Anay.
Alana and Anay. Okay. And Carl said he'd be late, so we got almost everybody. And then just to let you guys know, Kate had to resign. She got a job with the city, so there would be a conflict, so that's why she's not here. All right, so we'll start the review of serving our public. This is my copy. And we just ended out by email as well, an electronic copy. We're just gonna kind of go through the checklist. So hopefully you guys have had a chance to read the chapters, but if not, I mean, you know, we're all pretty busy. There's been a lot of meetings this week, so don't worry too much. There's like no pressure, because we'll just go through it all anyway. But if there's anything that kind of stood out to you, you don't have to read every single thing, because, you know, this is gonna be a longer meeting anyway. But if you just wanna kind of go over anything that you saw that either we can improve on or if we're doing really well, I think that would be really helpful. So I will kick it off. So I read chapter one, the Board Standard. It's just kind of like defining public libraries, also like telling like what things that we're, we should be doing. For the most part, we hit every single one of these core activities. Probably a couple that I picked out was like the Long Range Strategic Plan, Core Number 13. We'll probably need to review that, because the last one we built was five years ago.
Correct, 2017. I plan to put on the agenda for the full board meeting this month. I will formally request of the board that we extend it for one more year.
So that, that's something that we're, you know, we're always kind of thinking about as well. We talked last year, because I guess I have this chapter also last year. I wasn't trying to cheat. I tried to do things I hadn't done before. But number 15 was the Board of Trustees annually reviews the performance of the library administrator. And we did do that this year. We hadn't done it the year before, so that is done now. But everything else we pretty much are doing. So any questions for me? All right, then I'll give it to Sophia, Governance and Admin.
So pretty much everything we do here, one of the things that is again, the Long Range Strategic Plan, that is something that we haven't done in a while. And it said that we should survey the community and try every three years and try and get people who don't use our library to complete the surveys. So I'm not really sure how you do that, but that was one of the things that they recommended. And then another thing was, oh, well, that's the same as that, so.
I'll have to revisit what we did five years ago, because we had a huge response to our survey, like 12, 1300.
I remember, because I was on the original.
Yeah, yes. And I, I can't remember. I wanna say that the consultant said, there's no use in reaching out to folks who don't use their library, but I couldn't even remember.
According to this, it says you're supposed to try and reach out to people who don't.
Exactly. So I'll have to revisit, see whether we did or not attempt to do that.
So one of the things that we haven't been doing, which you guys said you were interested in going to Oregon, is it says library board members attend local, regional, and national conferences, and that's something that we have not. I, I attended a regional conference via Zoom last year, which was very interesting, but I'm not sure if we're really doing that yet.
Well, that does count.
No, I know, but.
I don't think we've done a lot of like continuing ed this year. Kind of not for the board members.
I think, I think part of it is, you know, since it's all been remote, I think almost everybody's a little burned out about the art institute, you know. You know, and we've had to twist staff, or usually people are clamoring to get continuing ed. Well, when we were closed, they were doing a ton of continuing ed. Everybody's just a little burned out on it. I think when it starts being in person again, you'll find, and even the, even the ones who are going to Effingham, a lot of people are gonna want to go for it, you know, because they are good, it's a nice networking opportunity.
Well, I mean, and Gazi and I, a couple, few years ago, we went to a board, the one that was put on by Cher, maybe?
Yeah, I remember you guys going. Anyway, so that's just one of the things that we're, you know, and then the other parts of the chapter were all about being on the board, monthly reporting, treasures report, who should be on the board, bylaws, all that stuff that we definitely do. And then the one thing that I wasn't 100% sure on, because I know Robert left, is do we have like a new written succession plan?
We've never had a written succession plan, to my, to my knowledge. We
That's one of the things they say we should do, right?
And I, yes, and we started, we started, when Robert was, after he, you know, started talking about leaving, before he actually announced, and I did start working on some things. They weren't, you know, about who's going to fill what role so much as whoever steps in this role, this is what you need to know how to do.
Okay.
But we didn't get very far on it, did it all, then?
Otherwise, we were completely compliant with the chapter. So I'm done.
Susan, you're next.
Yes, this was an easy one, I think. Thank you. And we, we comply with almost everything, but just a couple of things on point number five. I think this is true, salaries plus fringe benefits amount to about 70% of the budget.
Seventy-two, I think it was, exactly, yeah.
I thought it looked that way. And then it says the library should conduct a market benchmarking study with pay ranges conducted by the rep.
We did, we did like a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So that's good. And then on the checklist, it, public library trustees and administrators are aware of federal, state, and local. I mean, I know administrators are, and I'm not sure that the board is, the trustees are all aware of the federal, state, and local statutes and regulations.
What possibility? I'll tell you what the IHS board does is each month, a one board member is assigned one section of the law to read and then explain to everybody at the meeting.
I don't, I don't know how I feel about that, but I mean, it's a good, I'm not a lawyer.
It's, yeah, I mean, I, we, we haven't had to in a while, but there was, there was a time a few years ago where we had to be reviewing some things. We, you know, a couple years ago, we handed, we all got pretty familiar with FOIA. We all got pretty familiar with the Open Meetings Act, you know. So those are, you know, and you guys all, newer folks haven't received that training, because they haven't have it ready yet, but.
It's not ready.
I don't believe, so last time I checked, which was a couple weeks ago. So, but, so those are, that qualifies for me as a, you know, legal.
Other than that, okay.
Okay. Next up is Anay.
Yeah, so I have a chapter four. I think what stood out was that we need to be, I guess, reviewing in long terms and base meetings about every five years. And then
We were doing more COVID head. We were actively having architecting.
And I think, other than that, maybe the focus on the Americans with disabilities act as well, but if there is talk to architects, tech, then let's add on that.
We made some progress with that, really the city did, when they rebuilt the apartment lot, because there wasn't, there wasn't good access from the, from either Prairie Street or Beale Street. Still, Beale Street is great, but Prairie Street now is accessible.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So Rick has the next three, because Kate's not here.
Yeah, chapter five is easy. We own the building. It's not our responsibility. I mean, ultimately, ultimately, it's just not our responsibility. It's building infrastructure and maintenance. The one piece of it that is kind of ours is, well, it's not kind of ours, it is ours, and it's, it's a, it's a part of this is furniture is part of a capital asset plan. And we've got a plan for next year to be replacing some furniture, provided you guys approve the budget to put in front of it. So one of the selling points to sell in a building was so that library staff is not, you know, a building manager anymore. So I gladly let Bill Russell start the building manager, you know, after all those years with the Celtics, he's taken over.
We're much more exciting.
Yeah. And he's, you know, he just started, so.
Less trash.
But he, you know, seems like he's doing a great job. And Nick Hockey is our kind of assistant. And Nick is gonna be important in the next chapter, unless anybody's got any questions about chapter five, which is safety. So safety, this is a chapter that we need a lot of work on. It's, it's, this board asked me to get a new, a new safety plan. We have one a few years ago. I've got, I'll admit, I've got a draft on my desk and it's, it died on my desk. And I, I think it's really good in the sense that it's super detailed, but I think what we need is less detail. We need, you need something that staff can look at really quickly and figure out what to do. Now we've got more moving parts, because we've got more people in the building, more tenants in the building. But I think Nick Hockey, who is one of the assistant building managers, name this guy, he's also a full-time firmer, a Gator firmer. And I think, you know, it just struck me as I was reading this, that he could probably really help us with input there. We've also, I've also been talking with a staff member about kind of taking over the lead on, that staff member happens to be sitting in this room, taking over the lead on, on conducting drills, making sure that all the first aid kits are stocked and everybody knows where they are. We have to look into training on the defibrillators again, because it's been a couple years since we've done that. This is something we need a lot of work in. They, they recommend Narcan kit. We were told, we were told by the city attorney that we couldn't officially train staff in how to use Narcan, even though Illinois law, sorry, whatever if you watch, even though Illinois law says that there's no risk, there's no, you are completely exempt from any kind of legal jeopardy if you use Narcan and you're mistaken. It doesn't have any risk to anybody who's, is everybody using Narcan?
Yeah, Narcan, no, Narcan's a drug that people will overdose.
Right.
So if you overdose on heroin or anything.
So it can, it can save a life. And the thing is, if they're not overdosed on opiate and you use it, it's not gonna harm them.
With the puncture?
No, it's not punctured. It's a nose, nasal spray. It's a nasal spray. We, now, they did, she did say that if staff got training on their own, that's okay. If they wanna carry it on their own, we have had several staff members do that two years ago now.
Well, isn't it kind of a good Samaritan type?
Yeah, it's more than that. It's specific. There's a Narcan-specific law in Illinois that you're, oh, and if you, if you use it in good faith, that you cannot be, there cannot be any action taken against you. But about two years ago, we had a man in the mentor, public mentor, who was blue and unresponsive, and he walked out of here. So, you know, there's a, there's a
I don't remember that.
There's a tragic end to that story, because he died, he died of an overdose within a week, you know. But he was given, he was given that chance, you know, so. And I think we've used it one more time, and that person also walked out of here. So, so, you know, we don't have the problem with it, but say, Eurya has had, and a couple other voices, but it is an issue. So I would, I'm, I'm glad that the, that the Illinois State Library and the Illinois Library Association mentioned it by me. Bottom line here is, we've got, we've got a lot of work, we've got a designated tornado shelter, but it's not clearly marked. I mean, it is, but the stacks are too high to see those signs, okay? We have, we have about half, I walked around today, about half of our fire extinguishers have a sign that says fire extinguisher, the other half don't. We have, we don't have anywhere of the, they're available, a floor plan with exits. I think that's a, I think that's nonsense, but it is, you know, it is considered best practice. My thing is, if you gotta get out of a place, you're not looking for the floor plan, you're looking for the exits. And nobody's gonna say, oh my gosh, where's the floor plan, so I can find the exits. They're gonna say, where's the exits?
Or they're following people who are
Right. And the exits are clearly marked. But we do have a lot of work to do on this. I've got to review that and winnow down that, that emergency response plan. And maybe we just do one for the library proper and not worry about doing one for the whole building, you know. Maybe we let the city.
Oh, I wouldn't do one for the whole building. I would just do one for the library, the rest of the building.
Well, we wanted to work, we wanted to do it for the whole building when we first did that was, so, so.
But now that they're taking over all that space, like, it's not really
Correct.
And we're not really using that. I mean.
But even, even things like strong relationship with the, the local police. I, you know, the first two, the, the last two chiefs of police, I've had visits with conversation, and I haven't talked to the new guy yet. So, you know, I do need to, to start that relationship. You know, this is, this one is, we need a lot of work on, so.
Okay.
If no question, no more, if no questions on that, I'll move on to chapter seven.
Okay.
So chapter seven is collection management. Hey, it's really, something really cool here. We, you know, it used to be they said 12% of your, in the old version, they said 12% of your budget should be collections. And we never got past nine. Well, so far this year, we're at 10%. And they no longer say 12%, they say eight to 12%. And it gives you a range. So we're, we finally got there. We're at 10% of our, of our, and if you look at just, and it also depends on how you define operating budget. So if you take, some people would take personnel out of operating budget, and then we're at 26%. But they also, there's an appendix in this one that says, oh, it's not just the cost of books, you gotta be figuring in labor too. So, you know, I've never done that, and we could go, it could go way up. I mean, I, I, we're, we're way better on that than we used to be, I guess, because they've changed the standards. So that was good. We're, we've never quite gotten to absolutely annual weeding of the entire collection. We're really close, but, but we're not at entire collection getting, but it used to be sections weren't getting weeded for like 10 years, you know. So we're way better than, than we used to be. We automated some of it. So we've got our book, our main book vendor, Baker &amp; Taylor, we can run a report that says, you may want to check, take a look at these books, because if they've been checked out enough times, they probably look pretty grungy, or they're out of date or whatever. So we can just go run that list, pull it, and, and weed it. So we've gotten a lot better at it than, but we do a really, really good on collection management.
Didn't we have that other program that was telling us what books should probably be pulled from the shelves because they haven't been?
That's the one. And it, it does that to the same one. We, we, we intend to phase it out next year, because the whole idea was to get folks in the habit of doing it and get them trained to be doing it and get them on a schedule and doing it, because it's really expensive. And the first four years, Baker &amp; Taylor, if we subscribe to it, they gave us a big credit towards buying books. Like, it was like $9,000 credit in the first year, and $7,000 credit, $5,000 credit. Well, the credits are gonna be gone next year. So we're hoping to phase it out, and I think we've got people in, you know, in the habit again, so, or not again, for the first time.
Okay.
So.
You also have the next one, too?
Yes, I do. Chapter eight, system member responsibility and resource sharing. You know, this is one we also do a very good job at. What, you know, I, sometimes maybe promoting the service is something we need to work on a little bit, but other than that, we meet all the, we certainly meet the minimum requirements. And this is about being a part of the system, sharing the resources in multiple ways. For us, it's reciprocal borrowing. We're in agreement with all of IHS. If you, if you've got a library card from, you know, Moegle, you walk in this building, you can check out. You can check out books. If you order a book to be delivered to Moegle, we'll do that. Same thing with Moegle, we'll do it for us. Or if you guys do it in Moegle with your Decatur College library card, you get to use it. So, and I can tell you that Illinois has always been a leader in, in library resource sharing, way ahead of most states, except for, Ohio's pretty good, but like Iowa, Iowa, you, you know, our data, we share a database. So when you search something, you see, you get, you know, an entire share system who's got that book. And you can just click request. You don't have to know where it's from. You're gonna get that book. It's gonna come to you. We'll let you know when it's here. And some people don't even know when they come pick it up. They're, oh, it's from a different library. They didn't know that, because it's that seamless. In Iowa, all you can see is your home library. If you wanna know what anybody else has, you have to go to a librarian, and they look it up for you. Then they order it, comes in the mail, comes in the mail, we gotta pay the postage, and the state reimburses us later for some of our postage. This is so much smoother and so much better for, for patrons. So I think we can maybe do, we do also a nation, we're part of a nationwide, the online OCLC, and we pay a relatively small fee for that. I think sometimes I think we don't do enough job promoting that. Now, there's sometimes a fee to the patron, no more than $5. It's a cost recovery thing, because you can see how something's getting mailed from Alaska. There's a, there's a cost to that. But that one is something, I know we do a lot more lending in OCLC than we do borrowing, a lot more. Same with Cher, it's not, it's not a lot. Even in Cher, we do a lot more lending than we do borrowing. And that's not typical for large libraries. Large libraries are usually net borrowers. It's kind of counterintuitive if you got a bigger collection, which also have more pictures with more varied interests. So we are, but we're a net lender in both systems. It's, it's close in Cher, but in the nationwide one, it's like 300, we send out 250 to 3 items a month, 300 items a month, and we bring in six to six or so. So it's not even close. And it's in the thousands in Cher, but.
Okay.
That's, that's resource sharing.
All right. So move on to chapter nine. That's Shelley. I'm sorry. I should have given you the next one, because this one's a little bit longer.
Yeah, so this is reference in Readers Advisory Services. So I'm new enough that I don't really know all of these things. I, it, it feels like we're pretty compliant. However, I was wondering about, is staff training or provide staff training reference services to the needs of patrons who have challenges with disabilities like vision letters?
It's, it's something that we've had some, I think there's one who's had some training to work with folks on the autism spectrum. But we haven't done enough of that. I, that is a, that's a, that's a weak spot.
Yeah, and I mean, there's, you know, do you provide state maps and, yes, most of this seems pretty standard, but that was the one I was, I wondered about.
Yeah, and, you know, it'd be nice to, you know, same for programs, to, you know, to have somebody who, you know, simultaneously sign, you know, that uses sign language. It would be nice to have people that are bilingual. John out here on this desk speaks like a dozen languages. Most of them are not found in North America. So, but he's busy, he goes to Africa on a very regular basis. We've got maybe, I think Melissa has some German. You know, we just, we need, we need some, we need some Spanish speakers. And honestly, I think in this county, it would be, it's starting to become, in Main County, a language that is more frequent.
All right. All right. Readers Advisory, or would you look at that one?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I didn't scan that one as much as I did that, sorry.
No, it's okay. I mean, like, we do most of these things. So Reader Advisory, just for anybody who doesn't know, it's just like recommending titles, kind of compiling lists of, you know, for, for patrons, and helping them find what they're looking for. And it's mainly like for, for books, I would say.
Yeah, it seems.
Potentially movies and music, but.
Feels like we're pretty compliant with that, too.
Yeah. Rick, anything?
We probably do more of it upstairs than downstairs.
I was gonna say, upstairs, we do a great job.
Yeah. But, you know, it's in some staff's wheelhouse and others staff itself. But we, we also have some automated systems. There's a catalog will, the catalog will suggest, you know, if you like this title, you may like these titles. Our self-check machines will kick out recommendations based on what you check out. You know, given enough time, I'm a big fan of annotated bibliographies, but I'm an old-fashioned library reader, so it's just, they're really time-consuming. We have done a lot of, you know, on social media, a lot of staff recommendations, some of them themed, some of them not, you know, and, and And, and, and like our electronic, like if you look at Hoopla, uh, we compile, I, I think displays are our way of doing Reader's Advisory, because a display is a thing. Here's, on this subject, here's some stuff you may, you might like. We do the same thing on, on Hoopla. We, we have collections that we, that we make that are, you know, pretty useful. So, all that is Reader's Advisory stuff.
Good, that's what I had to hear. And so the next one is programming. Um, I had that one. So, some of it was like about, uh, permit, like provisions for, um, people with disabilities to participate. So, it was kinda ties back to the access, you know? We can always, can always do better with that. Um, I know last year, um, we had talked about like what types of outreach, um, and I think we have, is it still going on, the seniors part, like the nursing home program?
Yes, it's, I mean, it got, it got sort of, I mean, like a lot of other things, COVID slowed it down, uh, because they were hit particularly hard, of course, by COVID. But, uh, yeah, and we also, uh, work with the, uh, the, the opiate recovery center over at Crossing. We provide, we provide materials for, uh, the residents and children that might be visiting. So, but yeah, there's, there's, outreach is expensive, but these are low-cost ways to do it. So, in other words, we get the collection ready, they come check out the collection, take it back to their facility. And then they can check it out to their residents as they see fit. Next month, they bring it back and we give them a new collection. So, it's, that's the, that's the most cost-effective way for us to do it.
Can I mention, I received a phone call, um, I'm, let's go, two months ago. A woman wanted to know if we had put the seating back in, when we were just putting out the seating after COVID. She wanted to know if we had the seating back in the entryway. We could just walk her and she said she can't stand for very long. And so, I went down to the peak just to make sure it was there. And so, it was helpful to her that while she's waiting for someone to pick her up with a bus or a van or whoever comes to get her, she can sit, you know? And not stand as long. So, even that seating is helpful for people.
And we also have a very small individual outreach program. And it's very small because we've kind of, we've got one staff member handling it and, uh, some volunteers. And she's, a lot of our volunteers have sort of aged out. And we don't have a real set way to add people to it and we're having trouble recruiting new volunteers for it. But we do have a handful of folks that we, we, we do home delivery.
I'm just curious about one thing. It says the library provides programs on library instruction for all ages.
Yes.
So, do, do we do that?
We've got, we've got a lot online that's available all the time. So, you can, you know, you can, you can go to our website and see video, short videos on a lot of our resources. Mr. John does a lot of this too. He's got, he's great at teaching, uh, he does it for kids and families. Should do more of it that's just for adults then. But John, he, he's fantastic and he makes it, he makes it really simple and understandable.
For anybody who doesn't have kids, our children's library is amazing. And John is amazing at finding books for kids just to general. And it doesn't matter, he'll, you'll say, he'll say to the kids, well, what are you interested in? What other book have you read? I've brought multiple different kids here and he can always write a book for every kid.
He's published a book on the books for boys and he's published a book on camping in Little House.
He's pretty awesome. All our children's librarians are awesome. I mean, our librarians everywhere else are awesome too. I'm just saying, I have had more personal experience with children's librarians.
Well, I transitions pretty well to our next, uh, chapter, which Miss Alana has, um, youth and young adult services. And if you don't mind speaking up, cause I know you're kind of far away.
Um, so this one wasn't, I didn't have very many issues with this one. There were just a couple of things that I noticed. I'm not gonna say that we don't do, um, but I would like to come into it and see what, what we're doing in these regards. Um, the first one was the library, oh, so we've already been trying to talk about this. So, outreach services to you, um, to increase awareness and use of library services, attracting new users and to better reach, um, underserved populations? I'm not saying we don't do that, but I think that that's something that, you know, at post-COVID...
Always, always, uh, we do, we do some, so like when, uh, when school starts up, we've got stuff in there, packet, you know, the year's end, you can get a, a library card. We've also simplified getting a card for kids, so they can do it without for any parent. And they can take it back and we do that with GPS sixty-month and, yeah, that, that helps, but we can always do more.
Um, and then actually, so there are a little bit more. So, this is actually something that's kind of finance related that we talked about yesterday, um, the shelving. So, we were talking about turning the shelving downstairs. Are we gonna do the same up here or?
I, it's worth considering and, and the budget would probably allow it. My, my, my priority upstairs would be more the sitting for children, uh, it's seen a million days. But if we can do both, we can, you know, we can do both. I, the, at least the shelving appears the right size. It's aging, but it's, at least it's the right size. Downstairs, I think it's the wrong size.
Yeah. The next one was, um, providing, uh, developmentally appropriate programming, um, and services for young adults that fosters the development of self-concept, identity, coping mechanisms. Positive interactions with peers and adults. Again, that's kind of something that, it's not like we just ignore it, but, um, I don't know, something, you know, even like posters, put something as simple, as simple as putting a poster is about self-identity or... Cause I know we have a young adult section in the library, so maybe in that section, we could do a little bit more, uh, like graphic media related things that are just, you know, just kind of like, I'll service level, service level.
Sure.
Oh, um, the library fosters young adult leadership and civic engagement, which also kind of ties into, um, libraries are encouraged to partner with teens to create and implement teen activities. I thought it would be kind of nice, I don't know if this is something you've done in the past, but I thought it would be kind of nice to start, um, some sort of advisory board, some kind of youth advisory board.
One hundred percent agree with that. Here's, we, we did that.
We talked about it.
Yeah, well, but we've had a, now going into AP, so we've had our, the young adult librarian has had serious health issues the last couple of years. So, we haven't made a whole lot of progress on that. But we, we, we got a, a teen advisory board up in my, my last library and they got to pick, when we remodeled, they got to pick the furniture for the teen section. Now, nobody here would have picked anything they picked, but they loved it and, uh, it was cool. They, they really took it seriously each month. They, they came to us with recommended books to get and, uh, it was fun. And yes, we need, we need to do that here. We're at a hundred percent, yeah.
That'd be awesome. There was another one that had to do with students, um, kind of how we're talking about, I think this one had to do with like tours or something like that, a library. And I know we reped Decatur Public Schools and me being on board to get public schools. I know it could come down to like, you know, who's gonna pay for it, but I thought it'd be also nice, you know, at the beginning of semesters, that maybe we can bust out a few classrooms out here just to do a random.
And that's, then this tipping point is getting, getting here, train, the transportation.
Yeah.
We, we see more of the private schools, uh, than, than the public school. And, and we'd love to do those, those, uh, those tours, but it's just been a transportation issue with GPS sixty-month. Uh, that's the, that's understandable.
I'll check, Rick.
That'd be wonderful, yeah.
There's just a couple more. This is another one we already kind of touched on a little bit, um, having staff that assists with, um, youth with disabilities and language and literacy barriers. We talked about that one. This one kind of ties into the youth advisory. Um, the library seeks input from all staff serving youth as well as the community regarding services for youth. So, I guess that's just like, you know, feedback or surveys or something like that. And then the last two, um, the library strives to partner with youth-facing organizations in the community. And so, I guess that's just, you know, strengthening relations with partnerships such as like, um, Okalo or Boys and Girls Club.
And we've done a little bit of that here and there. And I know that there's a new director of Boys, she's not new anymore, but, uh, Boys and Girls Club. And she and I have touched base a couple of times and, and have not really gotten as deep into it as we should have. I, for instance, they've got a summer reading program. So do we. I mean, surely we could, instead of having a competition, uh, we could do it together, you know?
Um, and the last one was, the library provides youth with research and information, literacy instruction, we have, except that tours, training sessions and one-on-one session, one-on-one, uh, interactions. I think Anaya and I were actually talking about how, um, we're talking about how we don't get much use out of the ADM room. I don't remember what it's called. But just, I guess, like simple, like, you know, PowerPoint workshops or, um, the different Microsoft Office, you know, just little literacy media workshops that...
And we do those and they're, they're kind of aimed at adults, but we never said no to, to teens. But maybe we need to, to just develop ones that are, that are designed to attract teens.
Yeah, and Christie just did that one for teenagers.
That's right, that's right, she did.
That's a sad, but personally, we're more...
The writing workshop.
Christie was teaching them now to write a paper.
Right, yeah, she did, we did the writing, did the writing workshop. It was a, I think, five-week, uh, series. And we have, we have had Girls in Code in here, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a, it, you know, it's, uh, that is to get teenage girls interested in, in computer, uh, programming. And that was, that was cool. Uh, we had, matter of fact, we got a, we got an email, uh, earlier this year from a girl who went through our first Girls in Code. She's now a computer science major in college and just emailed to say thanks.
Cool.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. Hi Carl.
Thanks, ma'am.
That's all I have.
So, um, just saying to you guys, so over on this side where I can't see him is Jacoby. He's new, so he's our new board member. I know, I can see your name. So, just since Carl, you just started joining, um, so, um, so a lot of this got done, so now it's Jacoby.
The, the topic I was technology. So, looking at, looking at technology and, uh, I got to see part of it, I guess, in action with my, uh, orientation with Rick. We walked around, we looked at it. I think we do, from, from what I could see, uh, obviously I, being new, I would have to take a little bit more time to get familiar with it and, and to get more, more of a deeper level of understanding of how, how much, uh, how much of it we do and implement and, and just the depth of it. But from, from what I saw, um, measured against the checklist, I think we, we have a pretty good, uh, we have a pretty good technological footprint, both internal and external, uh, with the library. Again, like I said, I would like to, to take some more time to kind of go back and look at it some more. And, but, uh, I think from, my, my only question would be the library's, uh... I guess promotion from a technology standpoint, like Facebook, social media, Instagram, are we promoting the brand? From, from, you know, IE library, you know? So, so just from a technology standpoint, like e-blast, uh, do, does the library have a, um, uh, uh, a Facebook group that the schools are a part of? Is there like an Instagram page where we're showing, we're showcasing pictures of, uh, children, the children library part, the labs that we do? Just kind of more of a, from, from a, from a digital footprint standpoint, uh, on the technology side of, and, and where we're at, um, nationally, from a technology standpoint? Are we middle of the pack? Are we ahead of the pack? Are we kind of behind from, uh, what all we can do, uh, as a library from a technology standpoint? I know we do have, uh, labs to where we can do digital, uh, we can offer digital programming and we can have digital involvement. But, you know, how, 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 how much of that are we doing, right? How, what, what's the extent of it? Do we have the, uh, do we have the staff to do it? Are the staff empowered and, and skilled to be able to do those programs? How much would it add to the library? How much would it take away? So, uh, again, like I said, I mean, I, I would personally like to take some time to kind of go back into it, look at it and just kind of see...
Well, I've been really bad on the board for three, three weeks or something, so I don't expect you to know.
We, we, I, I think it's, it's probably aged out now, but, uh, I, I think the year before I got here, uh, or maybe even months before I got here, we did what was called an edge assessment. So, the edge assessment is something that was developed, uh, by the Gates Foundation in partnership with some other foundations. And it's, it's a tool for public libraries to do exactly what you're saying. Where are, where are we in comparison to other libraries of similar size in our technology game? Let me see if I can dig that up. Uh, again, we're talking eight years old now. But into the technology world, that might as well be a century, but, uh, it'd be a starting point. We might be able to use it and do it again, you know, based on where we are today, so...
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we're on like, I would say more of the cutting edge. I mean, I don't know, like, I, or maybe, maybe like three quarters of the way to the top. Cause I mean, a lot of the stuff that we provide to our patrons, um, I think that they might not be able to find elsewhere. In other smaller libraries for sure, but, you know, even some of the bigger ones may not have the budget for some of the stuff that, that we've been doing, so... I don't know, Rick, do you have any other comments on technology?
No, it's a, it's a, I, I will say this, I am a, uh, it's just, it's my, uh, strategy, I guess. I was asked in the day I interviewed, when I did a community, when I did the community portion of my interview, and I see no reason to change my mind, is that I'm a wait-and-see guy with technology. I'm not gonna take, unless I'm directed otherwise, uh, I'm not gonna take taxpayer money and get the newest thing just because it's the newest thing. You know, let's wait and see, let's let some other libraries take the risk, see how it works for them. If it does have legs, if it's got legs, we're gonna get, we're gonna get involved. That, you know, but that's why something like edge assessment, it compares you not to Chicago Public, it compares you to similar-sized communities. So, uh, that might, I, let me, let me look at that, because I think that might be useful to do again. Even if we, uh, I'll see what, what it tells us from 2013, but also see if it's worth doing again, cause it might be. Give us some, some more information in that about those questions that Jacoby had.
So, any other questions on technology?
Sorry.
All right. Okay, cool. And so Carl, you're up with marketing promotion and collaboration.
Hello, everyone. One apology for my tardiness today. I was stuck in Springfield and I could not do that, so, there's that. Uh, but one, I think what, what I talked about is kind of closely related to what, uh, Jacoby said over there and that marketing and technology obviously go hand in hand. We're not usually putting out, you know, fiscal flyers anymore these days, or in, in the classified section, things like that. So, anyway, I was gonna go to general overall checklist and situation. I think we do have a general overall marketing plan every year. Obviously, there's always room for improvement, but I think the library does a pretty good job in a sense there as well. Obviously, we definitely connect and promote some of the different initiatives and operations that the library does. Like right now with the, I think it may have just ended actually, but the Thursday events that we had going on, bringing those COVID resources to different parts of the community, I think we're really good at highlighting and kind of putting those out. Obviously, everyone could probably do a little better than that. I mean, but we, I think we do a good job and if we redefine other means in order, if we have a conversation, I guess, as, as a board, where we can make an improvement, then I think that's a great situation to do that. Uh, going down, let's talk about cooperation and we're at the general community, um, said that we participate in two or more cooperative activities per year, I think. Not to my own, but I think I could probably cross off my own stuff, let alone the guy in the Catalana and healthcare industry, e- every aspect of that situation. So, I think we're all pretty involved in the community and, uh, let people know about the different things that's going on here as well, so... And three is kind of, is kind of related to that, but more specifically... And three is kind of, is kind of related to that, but more specifically, what, how are we doing that, and I think our, our website and our social media presence is by far, like, the most uh, advanced, actually, saying what is most effective in this institute 2021, uh, again, now everyone's looking for a new favorite for a classified section hat or something like that, so uh, we, we have a social media presence on at least one platform, absolutely, uh, I probably could change my setting on Facebook so I see it first, I, I, I could do a better job on that, I would say that.
We're good better on IG, right, on Instagram, right Samantha?
I mean, I, I don't really see it, so.
Are we still doing that? Okay. Let me, let me tell, I, I haven't, you know, been a non-social media guy for too long, well, it feels, it's good for me, uh, aside from Twitter, we don't have any Twitter presence. And Twitter is a really effective way for a public library, but Instagram is something that, especially, it's a generational thing.
Yeah, you know, highlighting a book too, I mean, obviously seeing a title that book come across the page is one thing, but to actually see it in, in front of you in a capacity that's digestible, I think that's a great one, and maybe someone could plan to get our Instagram page more involved in this, just highlighting books that we want people to come check out in our library this month.
I know I've seen one like in the past month, but I don't see him all the time, so I don't know if it's just the algorithm, or if it's like.
Hey, we've done, we've done a lot in the last couple of years, we've done a lot of staff recommendations, so if y'all have some books that you wanna recommend, maybe one fiction, one non-fiction.
I'll give you a book, man.
No.
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully something we've got in our collection, or have access to at least, uh, that might be a pretty cool thing, uh, you know, and we could even put it on the website. I think we need to update the pictures, not for everybody, so a lot of, that's, that's something we've got, something we've gotta talk about.
Yes, oh, I don't want that picture. I need a new picture, 'cause I was very pregnant at the time.
Yeah, and you're the only one that this picture.
I'm the only one with a picture on there.
I gotta headshot, I can send to you if you want it now.
Uh, I, you know, I just, I'd like to get somebody in again and just do a, just a one-day, do everybody, and give you guys some more, you're always dressed for it, but.
Hey, I need at least a week in advance so I get my haircut game ready, excuse me on Wednesday, if you get it on Wednesday, I'll probably be right.
The last one, the last one was, you were, like, you were trigger-traded a library.
Alright, I'll take it.
I'll take a look at that.
Um, getting to it now, and obviously, we, we have a pretty close relationship with our, our state and federal officers, I don't think we've had, I don't think we've been raised by a US senator here for some time, but.
No, uh, Senator Durbin did, when we used to do uh, National Poetry Month, we did a poem-a-day video, and it was always kicked off with Senator Durbin, he did, he did a reading for us. Uh, I have uh, tried to connect with Senator Duckworth, uh, and, and a couple of capacities, haven't pulled that off yet. We have had, uh, you know, on a state level, uh, you've been kind enough to, to broker two uh, uh, state uh, senators uh, in here, so that's fantastic, we've had Congressman Davis in here, uh,
Representative, um, Representative Sheer is always here.
Representative Sheer has, is, she, she's never done a formal tour, 'cause her response is always, Rick, I'm there all the time, and it's true, so.
That, and the mayor did some reading with the children, that's what I'll do as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but maybe, but maybe I can see what I can do about getting done with you, I'll try.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we were trying to do ILA to get some, to get him in to talk to her about capital needs in Illinois libraries, uh, but since the infrastructure deal has been set for a while and waiting for approval, I don't think we're gonna make progress on that, but.
And I, it's a, it's a little in advance, but I, because obviously the elections are next year, but just about every secretary of state candidate that I've talked to so far, it's been really adamant about their role as state librarian, and that they wanna bring that more to the forefront, so.
It might not be a bad idea to bring in candidates, and once the, once they're set, uh, you know, to bring the candidates in, because we've done that, in fact, with the city council, uh, you know, brought candidates in, uh, we stopped doing that, and just whoever the elected is, we, you know, whoever is elected, that's who we're bringing in.
Yep.
Uh, and that's been, I think a positive thing, uh,
Yeah, I mean.
Couple we haven't had in a couple of years, probably need to, you know, touch base again.
We'll build a list, how about that, and then I'll, I'll get to work on that.
Sounds good.
Same, do you have anyone to add to that, Samantha, sorry?
It's okay, no, I think that, I think that's it, right?
Okay, gotcha. Um.
Does a library staff receive customer service training?
Uh, we have.
Have in the past.
Yeah, we have, and it just sent videos out all the time, uh, you know, and that is something I talked to Jacoby about, uh, that our orientation of that, that we've made great trade in the last six, seven years.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, we did the customer service training like, a few years ago?
Well, we had a big, we had a big one that was about, uh, it was about customer, building customer loyalty, it was like a sixteen-week thing, uh, and, you know, it was, it was, it was about internal customer service too, so everybody participated, you know, even the people who don't work with the public, and that, you know, I mean, the, the idea was if we're not serving each other well, we're not gonna serve others, and uh, it's a great one. But yeah, that's been a few years.
Okay. Anything else, Carl?
I'm good.
Okay, alright, so, we've gone through all the chapters, and so, we'll just like run through the appendices. So Appendix A, in case anybody is excited about Illinois statute, that's Appendix A, Appendix B is something that Rick manages with records to be retained in his votes, and he does it according to state statute, so, Rick?
Yep, and it's uh, it was something that, and we, we're still, we've still got a lot of work to do on it, but when I, we hadn't done it, we hadn't done a records purge in eight years, uh, when we did our first one, I mean.
Sure.
Alright, then Appendix B is uh, inclusion in board bylaws, and we do all of these things, so, um, we just revised the bylaws this year anyway, so, um, we, it says recommended, so if they're not specifically others, then it's okay. Uh, but we do have all the required statutoryal work, uh, things that we have to do. And topics recommended for new trustee orientation, um, four of you guys, I know Jacoby's, I think he just left the room, but um, you guys all did this recently, so, um, these are all like pretty much things that Rick goes over with new board members, and I don't think there's anything else on that. Recommended staffing level, do you wanna comment on that, Rick?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't have any prime meeting, I didn't review it, but it used to be just crazy, uh, so, uh, for a community of, if I remember correctly, a community of probably seventy-one thousand, uh, i- is, uh, I think the recommended level of staffing, depending on whether you wanna be a growing, or there's, there's different levels within that, but I, you know, I think you can talk about sixty-three full-time equivalent, we've got a thirty full-time.
It says thirty for fifty to seventy.
Yeah, it does say thirty is the base.
Yeah, base.
Yeah, uh, and, and that is our.
Well, growing adds more.
Yeah, but there's, there's base, there's, I can't remember what they call them, there's base, there's growing, there's.
There's minimum, growing, established, and advanced.
Yeah, it used to be when we were at, when, so, at our la- last census, it said sixty-three, and I'm like, come on. I mean, one, we can't, I mean, we'd be bouncing off of each other, uh, you know, I mean, yes, we need more than thirty. I'll tell you that, we need more than thirty now, but we can't afford it, and, uh, but sixty-three would be, I think, overkill. I, I can say about forty full-time equivalent would be, would make a huge difference, uh, but, you know, we have slowly chipped away at adding back hours that have been, you know, lost.
Oh, I see what they're saying, they're saying that basically, um, if we're an established library, we're supposed to have thirty plus seventy-five percent of the thirty. So, you're right, there is quite a few more libraries.
So sixty, sixty-five, instead, or sixty, or fifty, that's fifty, what's seventy-five percent of thirty? Uh, fifty would be.
Seventy-five percent of thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on.
Forty-three?
Something like that. So fifty-three?
Yes.
So, we're way short on seven.
I do know, I'm, I'm, I'm an analytics, so.
That's what we're going back to, because a lot of that is chaos.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, like you said, it can always be better, it can always, you know, if we have the money, we can always.
I, but, I mean, I want us to think about that, you know, where, I mean, look how short we are according to these standards, and we meet almost all the other standards in the book, with, with a staff that is way smaller than these folks. This book was incredibly controversial in the Illinois library community, the first draft was even more, it's written, it was written by suburban libraries north of I- eighty that have thirteen million dollar budgets, right? You know, and, uh, the rest of us were going like, are you, are you kidding? You know, we can't, we can't do this stuff, uh, and, and it, it's, this is toned down a lot from the first draft, but.
Well, and maybe that's, like, maybe that's including like branch libraries and stuff, because like you said, you know, you don't, people like, that, there's nowhere to put them, first of all, like, nowhere to put that many employees, but like, maybe they're talking about branch libraries too.
Yeah, but there's, but see, you know, uh, so, so a lot of libraries in communities even this size will have a, a CEO, and a CFO, and a HR director, and, uh, and a, uh, uh, you know, a chief of operations, and, uh, you know, it's, that, that's so, and we've got, that's my half, all those are my half, uh, they've got, uh, a director of marketing, you know, we, we do it by committee, you know, we do it by, uh, people who, we, you know, we hired people, we're lucky enough to hire people who had good graphic design skills, and.
That's a big plus.
Yes, and, and have, uh, you know, and, and we share it as best we can, but there are, I mean, there, I mean, even Springfield has a part-time marketing director, uh, and Springfield has a, they don't support their library at all financially, uh, but, uh, you know, Urbana has that, Campaign has that, Urea has that, Norman has that, uh, Bloomington has it. So, these are, those are the kind, it's not just bodies, it's roles that we, you know, we.
Well, it'd be kind of interesting, uh, I know we talk about like Champagne and Bloomington, but if they have those like marketing people, like, in our, what are our numbers compared to their numbers? I know that.
Well, they're bigger.
Apples between our communities, but.
Sure, sure, but they're, they're bigger, every one of them is, I mean, uh, Springfield is close to ours, but, uh, Urbana, I know it's a different kind of community, but it's also half the population of, of Decatur, and they do twice the numbers we do.
With which letter?
Urbana.
That's interesting, man, so, it is the.
Sure, it's a, absolutely, absolutely, it's a, but I guarantee you that.
It's just they're really like, you need, they come out and they should go up often, I know, 'cause I've lived it, so. Yeah, it's just completely like, the day can't get people to come out and go up in ways that honestly could never happen.
Yeah, and, and it's, it, it is a different type, I mean, they're also a great library, and I'm not gonna take away from them, it's a fantastic library, but yeah, it's, it's a really good library. And, and, uh, but yeah, I, I don't think, and I'm not saying we should be given twice the cert, but, you know, half the population, twice the circulation, and that's consistent year in, year out, you know?
How close is it to campus?
It's a, you could walk.
That's right, I thought I saw it.
Yeah, you could walk, I mean, depending on what part of campus you live on, but it's, it's, it's a, correct, you know, downtown band to campuses, you know, eight blocks, ten blocks, something like that, uh, yeah, and Champagne Public, but Champagne Public also, and this is, this is an important point, they do, so when, we were doing about nine hundred people a day through the door, we're not doing that anymore, but when we were doing, nine, they were doing twenty-five hundred, okay, there, there are a few blocks off-campus, so you can say, well, they've got thirty-five thousand students, right? But let me tell you something, when I was an undergrad there, wasn't nobody, wasn't any students going to the public library, okay?
No one does now, I know.
But, but, but they, but they do now, and you, you go over there, and there are kids sitting there studying, they built, they built a new library, and it was designed to have spaces for people to sit and quietly read, and either by themselves, in pairs, or small groups, all over the place. And it's full, do you know who their architect was?
Ours?
Ours, ours. So, uh, you know, and, and it, they, when they got to the building, they start, their uses went through the roof, and that's.
Well, I mean, didn't we say that in the oral track to the architects, it's not, it's, we're, we're talking about renovating the building, like, you don't renovate the building because more people are coming in, you renovate the building to get more people in, and make your space more inviting, and that's one of the things that we've discussed.
Yeah, but I mean, when you look at foot traffic, you have to look at the drivers with that, so, I mean, it's not necessarily we build a building and come in, or we have things that they could use and they come in, it's, it's the drivers, right? What's the, what's the literacy push of this, of the town, right? Is Decatur a town that promotes literacy?
Not enough.
And its, and its constituents, right? Is it, is that the case? If it's not, then of course, you're gonna have low, low, low turnout. I mean, that, that's, that's the bottom line.
Well, I think, I think that's one of the things that the library would like to do, is help improve, you know, literacy.
And we should get part.
Well, but, that's, that's, so the number one would be the school board, that's, that's number one, school board has to be pro- both private and public, right? I mean, they have to say, okay, we, we want, and, and also it's gotta come from, from the city, the city has to look at the school, the school's performance and say, hey, is there something that could be done, and partner with the school board, school board in and of itself can't do anything without funding from the city. City has to partner with the school board to promote them. Now, the library can sit up and promote all day long, but if the vibe of the town is there's no reward for literacy, why would we go and do something that's not gonna yield any fruit, that's throwing.
Doesn't have to deal with as many teachers unions as we do, we have to deal with like eight or nine different unions, something like that, that's, that's what puts, that's what stops us in our tracks a lot of times.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, it, it has to be a collective effort, right? I mean, it can't just be, let's dump on the school board, it can't just be, let's, let's pump the library up, to, it's, it's gotta, it has, what I'm saying, let me stop, sorry. It has to be a collective effort and, and more of a partnership, I don't know if that's gonna take meeting with different aspects of, of the, the city at large and say, okay, what can we do? Because we all feed each other, we, and one hand feeds into the other, like, it's like that poster where you see all the hands kind of going over, ADM is gonna perform poorly because we get our employees from the community, so if we get poorly educated or, 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 you know, lower-tier people, we're gonna have a lower-tier performance, same with everybody.
Or they're gonna, or they're gonna hire people outside, they're gonna hire, they're not gonna hire.
Which, which, which the city would buy in because that takes revenue out of the city, they're, which the, the.
That's, that's the, I mean, you know, I'm, you're the guy now, but, uh, uh, you know, I, I didn't grow up there either, and the perception, when I got here, and I still hear it, is we have jobs, we don't have the workforce. And that, you know, some of that, or it does revolve around, you know, education, and, and, uh, and I, I feel that we are a part of education, we're the, we're the do-it-yourself part, but, you know, that doesn't mean that we're not a part of it, uh.
But the big question is, do you wanna, do you have, see, workforces are created, so if I have a village, and I, I, we need to eat, I can't say, well, we're gonna starve because nobody's making us food, if we wanna eat, we gotta go out, and we gotta kill the food, we gotta grow it, we gotta build it, same with the city, I mean, if we wanna, we, we can't, can't crime saying, hey, we don't, not necessarily crime doesn't seem like crime, but we can't say, hey, listen, we, we, we don't really have the, the people or the resources if we don't help to, you know, build the resources, so, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know where that would start, I don't know what it would take, I just know. Typically, when you, when you look at the, the, the historical, uh, rationale from what feeds what and what starves communities, what grows communities, it, number one is, is the, the intelligence level. Europe was in a dark age until they learned how to. Europe was in a dark age until they learned how to be, be industrial. They were the last country to be industrial. Everybody else was light years ahead of them, until they learned how to be industrial.
We've got an int, we've got an interesting book, it's actually in the professional collection, but anybody wants to read it could, it's called, uh, Ten Ways to Kill Your Community.
Yep.
Uh, number one is that, you know, uh, don't, don't, don't take care of the water supply. Uh, number two is, never repay it. Don't worry about how things look.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's an argument I had a lot when we were, when we were getting criticized, the city was getting criticized for spending what they spent on our parking lot to make it look good, and I said, that's important, that's really important.
Well, it wasn't just about making it look good, the parking, the parking lot was dangerous.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, forget about the, the looks, I mean, I almost lost my car in a puddle.
But the argument, the argument some had was, we could, we could make it safe for a lot less money. Right? So, so, and my regret was, why would you build, you know, that, that changed this whole block, you know? That changes whole, the whole look of the place, and if you continue to do that, if you're gonna, if you make investments, if you make investments in how, in aesthetics, you're gonna make.
And downtown has been busier since they made downtown more aesthetically pleasing.
Invest in your community, they will invest in you.
Right, I mean, that, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the foundation of, of any.
Well, I think, I mean, we, as, you know, we're on the board, and we all care about this, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Right.
You know, like, we care about improving our community. So, I, I think, yeah, it just starts, it starts with all of us having a conversation, you know, and deciding our priorities too, because, like ours, we've had our strategic plan for a long time, and, you know, like, our, our community is always growing, changing, moving, so, you know, maybe it is, next year is a good time to do that.
Right.
Well, and did you have something to say? Sorry if I cut you off.
Touch on it a little bit, I was wondering, like, would this conversation be better suited for the strategic plan or the, um, D E I consultant, if that's what we choose to do?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
I think that, you know, uh, definitely, all of this stuff, this strategic is, is turned into a strategic plan, and most of it, if not all of it, is, is turned into a D E I initiative too. And, you know, one way or another, we're gonna, we're gonna fall suit, you know, so.
Yeah, so, I think it's a great conversation, and, you know, we can talk more about it, you know, next, I, I think we're gonna talk about it probably at the next board meeting, um, strategic plan at least, and, well, and the D E I consultant as well, with the plan, so.
I did have one question.
So, anything else?
For the strategic, we're not doing like that, we don't hire a consultant for that, do we? We just do that in, we do that in-house.
We did last time, uh, we hired a, a group out of, uh, St. Paul, Minnesota called Library Strategies. They're actually the friends of the St. Paul Public Library, that's how they, that's how they, uh, raised their money, uh, and.
Really great.
They did a fantastic job, uh, and, uh, pretty reasonably priced, so, I don't know, I, I would've thought, had COVID not hit, we could probably handle the next one on our own, but I think the, the whole landscape may have changed enough. It might be worth considering bringing them back, or, or, or another organization, you know, but.
Do we need to go back into, um, the budget that we did yesterday? Would that fit? Do we have?
I, I, I think we, we'll, when we get, when we get into it, we'll take a look, but I think it, I mean, I, I wanna say they were seventeen thousand, and that was five years ago, so, let's say twenty now.
Cause I think yesterday there was like, I don't remember, it wasn't like sixty-something in that?
No, it wasn't that.
About sixty, more than?
Wasn't that.
Well, but only partners.
Well, we've got, do we wanna go on to that next budget item, or then?
Um, I was just gonna run through the rest of the appendices, unless we don't need to, cause I think we're pretty.
I.
I looked them up.
Did they ask any, I don't remember, did you look at the grant application? Did they ask anything about the appendices? I sent it out, but I don't remember what it says.
I did not look at it. I don't remember you sending it out, but I could, or maybe you did, I don't know.
I think the only one that we were missing was, uh,
Uh, we need to maybe check the grant application, we, we ended on appendix F, like, we.
And K's.
K, K's, K's the facility checklist, uh, I did, I looked it up, and it's just a worksheet for collection management, uh, a lot of it is, is, there's, some of them are just tools.
Project, capital assess.
Yeah, I mean, we have all the policies for the appendix F, and, so, I think we're good on that.
Do we go to your collection management policy?
Yes, we do. That's, that's actually a legal report. For some reason, out of all the policies, the law says that one we have to review every two years.
So, don't think we need to do anything else with that, right? Just.
No, it's, it's, now it's on me to write up the, you know, to put what our discussion, summarize our discussion, put it in the grant application and get sent off.
Okay, so, move on to the budget proposal, uh, so last night we met, um, four-thirty, um, Rick walked us through the budget, and it was, uh, recommended to the full board for, uh, consideration, so, uh, do we wanna talk about it first, or do we wanna put the motion on the table?
Well, I mean, we can talk about some of the highlights and stuff, right?
Yeah. You got it up, Rick?
Yeah, uh, I've got that up, and I didn't, I don't think I sent out the projection for this year, but I think the number you were thinking of on it is what do we have, what do we have left over to spend this year is sixty-five thousand, and that's what we have, that we can spend this year.
Okay, and that was specifically corporate professional development, right?
No, but we, but wherever we're on, uh, so, forty-eight, if we pass, if you guys pass the J. Jones, uh, forty-eight of that would go, would go, would, so that leaves us with roughly seventeen.
I think what you were thinking about is maybe we have three hundred thousand left over?
Yes.
Keep that, add it to the, uh, capital fund?
Yeah, there's two things, two, there, there are two things, and one of them is what we've got left over we could spend this year, but that, it's gonna leave in Brooklyn three hundred thousand dollars this year that over, that we over-collected revenue. We've got two options, okay? We can put that in our, our operating cash fund, which is already fully funded, so that doesn't make sense, cause we can't use it for anything. The other option is to put it in our capital reserve fund, which we can only use it for capital projects, building-related furniture, that kind of stuff, that kind of thing. So, we recommend, we recommended that, you know, come January, whatever that overage is, it looks like it'll be around three hundred thousand. Uh, we don't have to vote on this today, we can vote on that at our next full board meeting, uh, if we rolled into our capital fund. So, we've already got three hundred some thousand in there, that'll make over half a million.
So basically, what we wanna do is, we wanted to buy a few open shelves downstairs just for safety and appearance.
Yeah, and then we can look at other furniture, the, the downstairs, the tall shelving replacing that would be roughly, uh, two hundred fifty thousand. So, here's, here's my operating budget proposal, uh, revenue is, we've got one really hundred-four percent increase, uh, and that's P P R T, that's personal property repleasment tax, that comes from the state. Uh, and that's a number that's provided to me by, uh, the city finance department. They have a relationship with the old park revenue, I do not, I get, I get some, some information there, but this is the number, I was, I was, I, my, my number was a little lower than that. Usually they're knocking my number down, but this year they, they, they built, they brought it up, so that's a good thing. Uh, I wanna point out that pilot, that is a locally generated, uh, revenue, first time since I've been here, it's gone down. It's only going down two thousand, so for the first time, local support has declined a little bit. So, it's not much, but it's something to pay attention to, to think about going forward. So, this year's budget, three point eight nine seven million dollars in revenue, I'm saying four point one three four. Now, our actual this year is on a pace to be four point two, because I think we're actually gonna collect more than two million eight hundred forty-two thousand in, in property taxes, where that's based on past performance and where we are now, two months left. Uh, we've already, we're already at two, two million eight hundred and twenty-two thousand collected, so. Uh, and the P P R T, we budgeted two hundred and sixty thousand roughly, we're already at five hundred twenty thousand, so, the actuals are gonna be way different. Uh, but, this is our, this is our revenue number that I'm proposing for next year. Expenses, actually going down a little bit, uh, on salary budget, and this is the most, I still, there's a couple of variables I'm still looking at, but this is the most expensive reorg option right now that I have on the table. This number's not, I, my projected number here, this is a worst-case scenario, I don't, I think it's gonna be more like what we actually budgeted. Here's the thing that made the bottom line for personnel costs go up is healthcare, medical insurance. Our, our portion of the premium this year, four hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, twenty-five percent increase. And that's set by, we're part of a self-insurance fund, city of Decatur. So, this is our budget this year, we're on a pace to do four hundred fifty-nine thousand, a little over that. Last month, I was telling you, it looks like we're gonna come in way under. Here's what happens with the self-insurance fund. Twenty nineteen, we had a number, excuse me, twenty twenty is a good example, we had a number from the city. Here's your formula, all your full-time employees times this, you're gonna get their, each one's gonna cost this much. But, since they, their costs were down, due to COVID, actually took medical costs down because people weren't doing their elective procedures, they, the city passed that savings on to us, and, and our, our premium was, ended up being much lower. This year, it was on pretty, it was lower, 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 until October, it just went through the roof. Their, city council was actually talking about that Monday. Suddenly, everybody's getting everything done apparently. So, we're on a pace to do a little bit beyond what was budgeted, but next year is way higher. So, that's, that was what had me scrambling, I got this number ten days ago, so that's what really had me scrambling to redo the budget. Uh, everything else looks fairly okay, I wanna point out, service to office equipment is up by thirty-five percent, but that's because I did a bad job. I just did a bad job budgeting, this is, this is a more realistic number, that's mostly service agreements. This is a, uh, an allocation set by the city for all the, the services they do for us, payroll and such. Uh, it was a hundred twenty-five thousand this year, next year's gonna be a hundred nine thousand, that's a thirteen percent reduction. Uh, we're grateful to, for that. Computer software, I've under-budgeted that for too long, I put it in fifty, fifty thousand this year. Professional services, so, forty green is what we budgeted this year, we're on a pace to spend only thirteen. I got a hundred two in next year, that's, here's what that is, that's, assuming we hired the J. Jones, pay half this year, that's that half, plus some other consultation things I'd like to do, and then our attorney, for whenever we need him, and, uh, you know, say we need a train or something like that, that, that would go under that line too, so there's enough, there's enough room in there to do that. Membership fees, I overshot this year, it'll be around fifty thousand dollars, that's mostly our membership and share, that's a delivery and shared database. Uh, these grants, so the grants, you see, those are just in outlines, I've got seventy-five thousand dollars in, up at the revenue line, seventy-five thousand dollars out on the expense line. I don't know what we're gonna get in grants, but if we don't, it's a placeholder, if we don't get, if we don't have a budget line for it, we can't use it, and we get it, we can't use it. Uh, small capital, I, we've got some servers we wanna purchase, uh, so I kinda bumped that up. Books and materials remains roughly the same, uh.
Our rent went up.
Rent went up in May this year, the contract said they, they can raise it a maximum of two and a half percent every five years, and May was five years, it went up to two and a half percent. Uh, so, last year was, this year is part of the year on the old rent, the rest of the year on the new rent, but twenty twenty-two is gonna be the new rent all year, so it's up, it's up a little bit. Leaving us a surplus of four thousand dollars. That's, that's tight, that's really squeaky. Uh, one year we did seven hundred dollars difference, uh, uh, we've never ended up in the red. We're going, only one year that I, I, I look back ten years, uh, when I got here in twenty fourteen, so I look back to two thousand four, we were in the red one time, and we budgeted really close sometimes. So, there's two other budgets, that's, we have three funds, there are three separate budgets. That's our operating budget, that's what we talked the most about, but we've also got this capital, capital budget, that's that reserve money, I'm saying we kick three hundred thousand more in, leaving us five hundred fifty thousand. We budgeted five hundred thousand for equipment and furniture, so, that gives us leeway, about half of that could go to the shelving, and it gives us leeway to do some other things, with shelving up here, furniture, uh, new desks perhaps. Professional services has to be capital-related, so if we wanted to hire a designer, or somebody to help us decide on, somebody helps write the specs, that kind of thing. Uh, so, expenditure's at five hundred fifty thousand, we don't have to spend every dime of it, but if we don't budget it, we can't. You know, we don't budget it, and we wanna spend it, we can't, leaving us with four hundred ninety-two dollars in there. So, we haven't spent, we've been building this up for years, we haven't spent it, I, in a conversation with our attorney two weeks ago, he said, you need to spend it, you can't just leave it in there indefinitely, so you need to start working on a plan at least to spend it. So, one other fund is our trust funds, these are, these are either legal trusts or just donated amounts. We get a lot of memorials, somebody passes away, you say, here's twenty bucks, please buy a, please buy a, a book with my father's, in my, you know, father's name and a plate on it, so. It's just a pass-through, again, uh, we didn't get any, any interest on these funds this year, so I'm gonna say zero again. Uh, contributions of thirty thousand, we probably won't even do half of that, but just in case it's there. Uh, and, uh, I, oh, I wanna, it used to be, we have one, a part-time assistant library, uh, like, excuse me, one part-time library assistant in local history, we've been paying her since we hired her from the Meyer Fund, Meyer Fund is specifically for local history. That Meyer Fund is down to about fifty-eight thousand dollars left, and it's time to get her in the regular budget, so I took it off this, this year, and I put her on the regular budget. So, those are the three, typically, we pass them all at once, uh, but obviously, uh, discuss as much as you either want to, and I'm ready to answer any questions anybody might have.
We, uh, finance, finance committee yesterday discussed this for a very long time, right? And, um, but if anybody who wasn't on the finance committee has any questions, I think we all are pretty solid on it, right? We voted for it when we were on board.
I did, something that I didn't ask yesterday, so since we are at the higher, so what, would that be used for, since we're taking that?
Yeah, we'll get back to that, and we'll show you, let's see.
Would that just be like local history projects?
Yeah, so, professional fees, so if they have to, if they have to do any consulting, I, we, I would never spend anything on that in there. Uh, supplies, they do buy a lot of archival supplies to help preserve materials, boxes, sleeves, that kind of thing. They're not cheap, but still, we're, it's usually around two thousand a year, maybe twenty-five hundred. Uh, small capital, that's it, last time, it was a, it was a big step ladder, cause they, you were just back to the day, that, you know, so, there's mostly retirees, you know, that are trying to get stuff from way high, so it's a really big white step ladder with railings on both sides. Uh, and then books and materials, there are a few things that they, that they do buy, and most of the stuff they get is in there, but, that's, it, but it has to be local history related. That's, it, but it has to be local history related.
Oh, any other questions from anybody who wasn't at the meeting yesterday, or if you were at the meeting, like Alana?
Where'd you go?
We lost her. There you are. Well, I wanna, uh, make a motion to, um, propose this budget that we recommend.
Is that what we're doing, Rick? Is, is serving the budget?
Pass it, pass it. Send it on to the city council.
Send it to the city council.
Second.
The second time. The first time you said it.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Does anybody have any further discussion? Okay, so we do have to go through everybody, um, roll call, since it's money. So I'm just gonna go down my list of chapters, cause that's how I have everybody. Um, Sophia?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Ade?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Alana?
Yes.
Jacoby?
Yes.
Carl?
Aye.
And Samantha, yes. So the budget is passed.
I will send tomorrow, I will send it to city treasurer, who will, uh, adjust our numbers in, uh, the, cause they already, they populated the numbers in the software, uh, and they will get those adjusted. And they've already, city council's already passed our part of the budget based on their numbers. But they told the city council that library will still probably tweak their things, and they'll present back to the city council at the next meeting, which is, fifteenth, fifteenth? Yeah, and they will, uh, it's, it, it's typically not controversial at all unless we ask them to read the property registry, uh, because it's just a pass-through.
So, um, I guess the only other, there's one other question I have for tomorrow. Carl, Shelley, and Susan are gonna be at the PPR, PPPR committee, do?
I do want to say.
Yes.
Okay, just because I might also not come to that in person, depending on how I feel. So I don't wanna get anybody sick, so just trying to be safe. Um, that's all I had, so I will take the motion to adjourn.
Just try to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, there you go. All of them are. Hi. Thanks, guys.